You ready? Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to go ahead and call to order the November 18th meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors. And being as we are honored by the presence of our Sheriff, Ed Bonner, I'm going to ask if Ed would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ed. And now Ann will do what she loves to do, and that is read our statement of meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, November 18th, 2014. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The Board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the Board. Keep in mind that the Chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. This is a time for public comment. At this time, any member of the public may address the Board on any item that is not on our agenda, knowing that we cannot take action on items raised under public comment. If anybody wishes to address the Board, please step forward to do so now.
My name is Mike Murphy. I'm an architect in Auburn. I live at 180 A-Guard. And I'd like to take this opportunity to bring up a couple of new items. I am very happy you're showing art in the chambers here. Unfortunately, I kind of covet this space. I covet the building. The domes, if you would look at the feasibility, ought to be an art museum. I think that as time progresses and you need more space, or you want to think of alternate uses for this, this is an ideal location. It's an architectural gem, and I think I'd like to put it in the hopper to actually turn this into an art center. Item two is, your location is connected to a proposed improvement along Nevada Street. The City of Auburn has obtained monies to improve it for pedestrian and bicycle access. I have been to a meeting or two about that and haven't seen any county input on it. I think you're of a big beneficiary of that access. I think that you could bring some very interesting needs to it if it turned into an art museum or something that people might want to walk here from the other parts of town. Right now, good luck. Getting from the Intramoda over here works well, but I would like to see somebody look at that plan if you haven't. And I'm part of a community group that has looked at it. So those are the two items that I would like you to start considering. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
And Mr. Sheriff, may I have been in contact with some City Council members and have been kept abreast of the city's proposal.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Board under public comment? Yes, sir, come on up.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Pete B. Jordan on Allen's and Property Auto Sheridan.
Are you here in regard to the Board's action on the Sheridan?
Yes, but I didn't, is it?
It is an agendized item, we'll get to a little bit later, so if you just hold that comment, we'll welcome you right back up then. Anybody else wish to address the Board on any item not on our agenda today? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on from public comment. Any Board members have anything they wish to update the Board and the public about? Nope, okay. We move on to the consent agenda. Any items on consent, any member of the Board wish to have removed for discussion? Seeing none, any member of the public wish to have a consent item, agenda, or agenda item removed for discussion? And I'll entertain a motion on consent.
Move approval, consent.
We have a motion, Holmes, and a second, Montgomery, on consent. Roll call, please.
Holmes, why can't Montgomery? Euler.
Aye. Thank you very much. Go ahead and move into our first timed item. Mr. Murphy referenced the art that we are displaying, and so at this time, I'd invite Anita to come up and talk to us a little bit about the Employee Art Show that's going to go on for the next few months.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of the Board. Anita Reese with the County Executive Office. With me today are the multi-talented members of the Employee Art Show Committee, Jody Hoffman from Health and Human Services, Suzie Boz from Facility Services, Robin Luther from the Assessor's Office. Also with us is our community partner, Placer Arts Gloria Coots and Rosie Stillwell. They're our curators for the show.
We're here to invite everyone, Board members, the public, and employees to our annual Employee Art Show. Coordinated in partnership with Placer Arts, the show opens today and runs through February 27th of next year. To give you a better idea of how excited we all are of putting this together, we have a two-minute art show video.
This year's show features more than 70 artists showcasing the artistic talents of 35 employees. They've used a variety of mediums, including photography, painting, textiles, sculpture, and other media. As an added feature, we brought some of the art to you, as you can see on the walls, and we brought copies of the colorful art show brochure for you as well. And then just to reiterate, we've expanded the art show this year to five locations. Art is displayed at the Domes County Administration Center, the Community Development Resource Agency, the Finance Administration Building, and the Tahoe City Library and Customs House.
Come celebrate our employee artists. Everyone is invited to the opening receptions on Wednesday, November 19th, 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Domes County Administration Center. Thursday, November 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Community Development Resource Center and the Finance Administration Building. Light refreshments will be served.
In conclusion, Employee Art Show information can be found on our website, placer.ca.gov, and on the Employee Intranet, myplacer. We thank your Board for your continued support of the arts and employee artists.
Thank you for the presentation. Board members, have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to our nine, 10 timed item. This is a commendation honoring Under Sheriff Devon Bell. And Devon, if we could have you come on forward at this time.
My pleasure to read this commendation dated today in the matter of commendation recognizing Under Sheriff Devon Bell for the completion of the Naval Postgraduate School Homeland Security Master's Degree Program with a Master's Degree in Security Studies. Whereas the U.S. Department of Homeland Security offers a Homeland Security Master's Degree Program at the Naval Postgraduate School in Monterey, California, and the Homeland Security Master's Degree Program provides leadership with the knowledge and skills to develop strategies to prevent terrorist attacks within the United States, build organizational arrangements to strengthen homeland security, including local, tribal, state, federal, civil military, and inter-agency cooperation, and help officials improve homeland security preparedness by conducting real-world actionable policy and strategy development. And whereas Under Sheriff Bell entered the U.S. Department of Homeland Security Master's Degree Program May 1st, 2013, over the next 18 months attended seven rigorous two-week in-residence sessions at the Naval Postgraduate School, whereas Under Sheriff Bell successfully completed the Master's Degree Program and was presented with his Master's Degree in Security Studies from the Naval Postgraduate School on September 26th, 2014. Now therefore, let it be known that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, commend Under Sheriff Bell for obtaining his Master's Degree in Security Studies from the Naval Postgraduate School.
After all, you're the guy who gave the time off. So seven, two-week in-residence in Monterey County. It sounds like a paid vacation to me. Off-state home.
If you would, please, a few words, thank you. And Sheriff, you too.
Wow. First off, let me say thank you very much for the commendation, although my name may be on this. Anybody who's been through any kind of an adult education program recognizes it's a team sport, and I would be absolutely remiss if, first off, I didn't thank my wife and children, who endured me being gone a lot. And when I was there, I was certainly very involved in trying to balance my studies, my work, and home life. And I can tell you, my wife's very happy to have her kitchen table back. I had stuff scattered everywhere. And then the other thing I want to say is thank you very much for the support of my agency. The executive team sitting behind me could not have done this without them. And finally, without the support of the man immediately to my right. It's been my privilege and my pleasure to serve at the will of, who I'd say is the best sheriff in the state of California, and I couldn't have done it without him and his support. So thank you.
I want to thank the Board for recognizing the hard work that Devon put into this, and I can only guarantee you that we're already reaping the benefits of his educational growth. Some of the things he's brought back, some of the innovations in, even in the way that we do promotional interviews, it's just, you look at that, you go, what a great idea. Why didn't I think of that? But anyway, he has been a tremendous asset to the county, and I'm just, Mr. Chairman and Board members, thank you so much for taking the time to recognize him and his efforts, and I guarantee that they will continue to benefit us through the years. So, thank you. Thank you. Supervisor Montgomery has a comment here. Hold on, before you run away.
Devon, before you run away, I had a couple of quick comments. One, I just wish everyone could have seen Devon's face, because he's a very humble man, as most of you know, and he was clearly uncomfortable with this honor being presented to him, so I-
Which is why we did it in the first-
Which is why we did it, of course, yes.
Mission accomplished.
We're all about the public humiliation. But I really wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you. We did try to get you to Medlars to give a presentation. We've not given up on that, so I'll be following up with you, because the community is actually very interested in what exactly was it that you did, and how is it going to benefit the larger Placer County community? So congratulations to you. A master's degree is just a fantastic, fantastic achievement. We're all very proud of you, and I'm going to follow up and make sure we get you to Medlars at 7:00 a.m. on a Tuesday morning. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And then just briefly, I wanted to recognize and thank both of you for the leadership that you showed in this latest crisis that we as a community had to endure, and how by your graciousness and your example, you've shown us all how to act in very trying times. So thank you very much, both of you, for your leadership. Okay, we will move on with our 9:15 timed item. This is a presentation of commemorative coins. A number of years ago, the Board of Supervisors decided to recognize individuals who have made a significant contribution to our community. The commemorative coin program was instituted here by the Board of Supervisors in 2002. The program has rewarded community members of the county for acts of heroism, longstanding community service, and exceptional acts that have dramatically improved or impacted people's lives. As Board members, we're given the opportunity to award a coin recipient that meets one or more of the following criteria. Offered contribution of longstanding service to Placer County or to the residents thereof. Sacrificed a combination of time and talent to Placer County or the residents thereof. Went beyond the call of duty to save a life. Voluntarily performed an act of heroism and was not paid for the act. Participated in a rarely told or reported feat, dramatically improved and/or impacted a life. And so I'm pleased today to introduce two presentations. First, Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, there's a lot of unsung heroes in our communities that do a lot of good things every day, and my recipient, Fuzzy Charnigan, epitomizes that type of activity and community activism. And Fuzzy, I want you to come forward to the lectern, please. And I want you to know that I'm not going to go on and on and on about how great you are, because I know you have a golf date, okay? You've got to get out there before it starts raining, right?
Right.
And anybody that lives in Loomis, and I'm sure Sheriff Bonner understands that, and Devon as well, whenever there's an event in Loomis, there's Fuzzy. He's out there setting up signs, or putting up roadblocks, or helping people find parking. Throughout the 10 years I've been on the Board, every time I'm in Loomis, there's Fuzzy, and you've been very confident to me. I know you don't have any trouble telling people what you really think, and I appreciate that. For the last five or six years, you've been the Chair, the President of the VFW post down there. You're the glue that keeps that organization together, and they do so much for the town of Loomis and the community. I know you served in the Navy for six years during the '59 through '63, I believe, stationed in Japan, lived in Loomis for 35 years, and just an active community member. You're a leader at the Memorial Day Ceremony, which I appreciate, and the great thing about the Del Oro Memorial Ceremony is the kids do it, but you're there guiding them and putting that together, and that is a really worthwhile experience for me, but also for the kids to be able to understand the importance of Memorial Day. I know you're a man of few words. I just want to let you know how much I appreciate your leadership in the town of Loomis and the community, and I just want to honor you with a commemorative coin. So, I'm going to bring it down to you.
After what Jim said, there's not much I can say. One thing I will say, though, is everything I've done wasn't for this, but I sure do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In my presentation today, as we look at the criteria, I'm struck by dramatically improved and/or impacted a life, offered contribution of longstanding service to Placer County or the residents thereof, and sacrificed a combination of time and talent to Placer County or the residents thereof. I would like to invite the 2008 recipient of my coin presentation, Bayside Senior Pastor Ray Johnston, to come forward to please speak on behalf of this year's recipient, Bryce Jessup. Bryce, if you'd step forward too, please.
First of all, I received this in 2008. I was thrilled to be overrated at the time, and this is a significant upgrade. Bryce, I don't know anyone like you. You served as President of San Jose Christian College and William-Jesse University for 25 years. During those 25 years, and these are just facts, you substantially improved the financial position, and you achieved regional accreditation, and that's no easy task, significantly increased enrollment, broadened the curriculum, and then in your mid-to-late 60s had the guts to sell the campus in San Jose, significantly upgrade, and move the entire university to 128 acres in our area. And if this works, that's what it looks like now. That doesn't happen without, in your own words, dream a dream and build a team. And you have been a professor, pastor, coach, dean of students. You have spoken at thousands and thousands of conferences and events, including Bayside every year. You have been a mentor to CEOs, to pastors, to businesspeople, to government, and students, and I have never seen you treat a CEO or a student differently, in the same person with everyone. You were named Man of Valor by the Racial Reconciliation Committee of the Santa Clara African-American community, which is an amazing honor, and that was repeated up here, where last year you received a Lifetime Achievement Award at the Martin Luther King Gathering. You serve on six nonprofit boards, including AIM, which works to rescue girls who have been sex trafficked, and some of the towns we worked together with your organization, 100% of the girls were sex trafficked in those towns, some as young as four years old. And you have given a lot of time to make sure that gets stopped. You have been married for 58 years, which I think is a California record.
That's-
59 now.
That's crazy.
Your parents had a pretty good example, and this was you and Joe on your 50th wedding anniversary, so now it's 59. Now that's the stuff I was supposed to say.
What I really want to say is this, Bryce, I know you well, since we hung out a lot
when you moved up here. You're just a world-class human being. I've told people before, and I'll tell them again, you're the single best model and mentor that anybody's ever had. These days, the Christian church, in my opinion, needs to have its credibility restored, and it needs to learn to live for what it's for and not be known for what it's against. And you have modeled those things. You have been the single, I mean, pastors' gatherings at William-Jesse, it went from 25 to 600 pastors. You're the most unifying person in our community. You also have been a great model and a mentor for me, especially in leadership and marriage. Matter of fact, on your 70th birthday, Bryce hikes to the top of half-dormant stands on his head. But even cooler than that is, you don't go alone. There's your dad, and there's the whole crew up there. And on your 80th birthday, you're planning on doing the same thing.
Next to you.
Yes. George Bush Senior has nothing on you, Bryce. And so, on behalf of the entire community who is benefiting from the university, and on behalf of all the leaders in this community who have benefited from your example and our relationship with you, we just want to say thank you. You deserve this award. God bless you.
We'll take the picture first, we'll let you have that. Thank you, Bryce.
Wow, thank you, Kurt. Thank you.
You betcha.
Thank you.
Microphone's yours.
Wow, what do I say after that, Ray? Thank you for those very kind words. Ray, you were one of the first ones, when we were yet in San Jose, spoke in chapel, and we were having a difficult time trying to find a place to relocate to. We were going to die if we stayed where we were. The powers that be in our community over there weren't near as friendly as you folks were, and he knew that, and he spoke in chapel and challenged us to start looking over the hill. And I'm so glad God gave you that vision, and that you've planted that seed in our hearts, because it has been an absolutely fantastic place to be. It's our Garden of Eden. The way in which you guys have run this county, you stepped up, some of you were on the Board at that time, and you just opened the door and said, "We want you here." And we were blown away when, in just 14 minutes, the Planning Commission gave us approval to move into the facilities. I just about had a heart attack. And I can't thank you enough for the way you have participated with us. There's no place on planet Earth that is as good a place to be for the university as it is here in Placer County. You worked with the City of Rockland, so it was a seamless transition, and we just want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the privilege of being here in this region for the job that you are doing. And it ain't over yet. That university is just getting started. We've got a lot of land to yet fill with buildings and people, and we look forward to our continued partnership. Thank you again for this honor. What a joy to receive.
Thank you, Bryce. And before you walk away, Bryce, before you walk away, I just want you to know that Ray spoke to the example that you set as a pastor, as a man, as a husband, but I want you to know that the example that you set as a leader of higher education is still resonating very strongly here in Placer County. As you know, there are a number of initiatives underway here with a regional university and possibly a Sac State campus, and everybody looks to the example, the road that you plowed with William-Jesse as a wonderful example of success that can be had in higher education here in Placer County, that we have students here that hunger and thirst for the knowledge that higher education here locally would bring, and we want to keep that talent here. And so I want to thank you, and just let you know that by virtue of your courage in establishing this university here, you've shown the light to a lot of others, that this is, in fact, a good place to educate young hearts and minds. So thank you for that, and know that your impact goes far beyond your campus.
Thank you, Kurt. Appreciate it.
Robert?
Just want to add one thing. People can draw their own conclusion from this, but I want people to know that Bryce is also a black fisherman.
That's right. You got it right, Robert.
And Supervisor Holmes?
Bryce, your leadership sure is evident throughout the county. You know, when we had the memorial service for the slain Deputy, Sheriff Bonner said several times how blessed we are in Placer County, in our community, and I just want to let you know what a blessing it is to have you and William-Jesse University in Placer County. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, Jim. You guys are great. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bryce. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to our department items in advance of our next timed item. So we will begin with Administrative Services Procurement. Did we catch them by surprise? They rushing over from Conference Room A right now, now that I just called the item. Here they come. We'll start with a renewal of the blanket purchase order, and then we'll move on to the award bid for multiple departments.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Supervisors. My name is Brett Wood. I'm your purchasing manager. Here today with the first timed item, or the first item is a request for your approval to renew a blanket purchase order with the State of California Franchise Tax Board for court-ordered debt collections. This is in the maximum amount of- This is in the maximum amount of $1.17 million, and is from period of January 1st, 2015, through December 31st, 2017, funded in the current budget year, as well as future budgets, with no new Nat County cost. These are for debt collection services that are ordered by the court. And they're basically, the board approved this contract back in 2011, and it's a three year contract. It's operated court ordered debt collections, and then they take a 15% commission, and the remaining balance comes back to the county. This has been a very effective solution for the Revenue Services Division, and they'd like to continue utilizing this. With that, be happy to stand for any questions you may have.
No questions by board members? Any member of the public wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion Holmes, Second Wiggant, in order to approve item 5A. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? Thank you very much. And item 5B.
Mr. Manning's going to...
You got air cover on this one.
Yes. Again, my name is Brett Wood. I'm with your purchasing division. And we're, item 5B is a request to approve 11 different firms for original equipment, manufactured parts and services for the Department of Public Works Fleet Services, Road Maintenance Services, the Sheriff, Fire Department, or the, yeah, the Placer County Fire Department, and the Sheriff's Office. So, all of these different agencies need original equipment, manufactured parts to maintain their fleets. We're asking for your approval to, for $638,600 for these different, for these 11 different firms, as well as the ability to renew them and authorize change orders to them in the maximum aggregate amount of $63,860 for the next three-year period. With me is Mr. Manning, and he'll be able to explain a little bit about the process that we went through and how we came to this recommendation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Just quickly interrupt.
Yeah.
Never mind. I just clarified my own question. Thank you.
Glad we could help. All right. John, if you would, please, go ahead.
Yes, sir.[746.82][746.82](laughter) All right. Good morning. Up until last year, the county negotiated blanket purchase orders for original equipment manufacturer, or OEM, auto parts, and dealer services with vendors throughout Northern California region, on behalf of the Department of Public Works Fleet Services and Road Maintenance Divisions, the Department of Facility Services, the Placer County Fire Department, and the Sheriff's Office. Last year, we sent out a competitive bid for these goods and services and only received four bid responses. This was less than what we expected, considering that the county typically awards agreements, more than 20 blanket purchase order agreements annually for this commodity. This year, it was determined that we would rebid these agreements in an effort to increase vendor participation and to get more vendors registered to receive electronic notices of the county's competitive bidding opportunities. This year's bid resulted in 12 bid responses, 11 of which are being recommended for award of a blanket purchase order. The increased competition from this year's bid resulted in better auto parts discounts and dealer labor rates for some of the OEM brands required by the county. We're still going to have to negotiate blanket purchase orders for the other OEM brands that were not bid on, and we'll present those to your board for approval at the next regularly scheduled meeting on December 9th. Therefore, we request your board's approval to award blanket purchase orders to the vendors specified in the agenda item in the maximum aggregate amount of $638,600 for the period of November 18th, 2014, through December 31st of 2015, and authorize the purchasing manager to sign the resulting blanket purchase orders and optional renewals. I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
No?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Remember, the public have any questions on this item? And we have a motion.
Second?
Motion Holmes, Second Montgomery, to approve item 5B, 1, 2, and 3. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Supervisors meeting of October 7th, 2014.
Mr. President?
Let's do a roll call, please.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Wiggant? Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. So, we have three ayes and one abstention on 6A and 6B, minutes of the October 20th Board of Supervisors meeting.
Second?
Motion Holmes, Second Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? Thank you very much. Okay. We will move on to the Community Development Resources Agency Planning Services Division, final action on the Sheridan Community Plan update. And Chris is going to lead us on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a second hearing, third hearing on the Sheridan...
Crystal?
Yes. On the Sheridan Community Plan update. And so, this is a, had been continued from our October 7th hearing. And Chris Smith's just going to give kind of an overview of where we're at.
Okay.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. As Crystal mentioned, at the last board hearing, the board took tentative action to adopt a Sheridan Community Plan with a couple changes. One of those changes was to remove the United Auburn Indian Community properties, nearly 1,200 acres north of Kirchner Road, out of the community plan boundary, as they recommended, or they had requested. And also, to change the proposed rezoning on a 33-acre parcel at North Nader Road and Sheridan Lincoln Boulevard, from the recommended Farm 20 to Farm 10. So, it'd be Industrial Park to Farm 10. So, with that, we're recommending adoption of a negative declaration and errata. The errata talks about the two changes the board requested. Approve a general plan amendment to adopt the Sheridan Plan. Adopt a general plan amendment to the land use diagram of the general plan to show those properties that are now being absorbed into the Sheridan Community Plan area. Adopt a zoning consistency ordinance to rezone several properties in the plan area boundaries. And also, a zoning text amendment to add a town center commercial combining district, and the definition for live work units into the zoning ordinance. But that, I'll answer any questions.
Board members have any questions?
Sub supervisor Wiggant.
Obviously, Pete DiGiordano is here, and I think he wants to address this item. So, if you're willing to reopen the public hearing, I'd encourage that. And I've spoken to Mr. DiGiordano. But, Chris, one thing that I'm uncertain of, I have an email from him also, and the recommendation by the board to rezone a parcel that is currently zoned industrial to 10-acre minimum. I was of the impression that it was a 30-plus something acre parcel, but in Mr. DiGiordano's email, it refers to it as being 28. And it's compelling, because it makes a difference as to whether or not there are two or three building sites on that, if it's 30 versus less than 30.
It's 33 acres. So, Farm 10 would allow for a three-way split.
Okay. And you're certain of that?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions by board members? While we did conduct the public hearing and close the public hearing at our last board meeting, when we entertained some modifications to the plan prior to its adoption, we will accept any comments any members of the public might have at this time, prior to the board taking final action on the plan, sir. This would be the appropriate time for you to come forward and state your case. Good morning.
My name is Pete DiGiordano, and I'm in the cabinet business. I purchased that property with the intent of building a cabinet shop there. And the way that everything went, I was going to need more labor force than the sewer capacity, that property probably having sewer capacity. So, I built 140,000 square foot cabinet shop at the airport in Alderhurst. I'm getting ready to get out of the business, and I'm leaving my business to three of my sons. And we want to get into the granite business, culture marble, and also the interior door business, which we're looking for a piece of property, well, we will be looking for a piece of property for if you guys change the zoning on my property that I have there, or in chance, or sometimes in the near future, would have been to build out there and expand on my business that I have. I don't think that it's fair that I purchased that property as light industrial, and now it's being changed to residential or 10-acre minimum. I understand that Mr. Kalison of Fiberglass, I manufacture, had that zone. And had he still owned it and hadn't done anything with it, I could see you guys saying, "Hey, we zoned it for you, and now we're taking that away." I purchased that property as light industrial. I need that property to remain light industrial. I sent you guys an email, and I consulted an attorney. He said it's going to cost me about $250,000 to fight this, which I guess that's what I'm going to have to spend, because I can't purchase another piece of property of light industrial for $250,000. I think that it's unconscionable that you guys are trying to change that zoning. I purchased it like that, paid more money for it. I purchased a piece of property behind it. It was 38 acres. I paid $65,000 for it. I purchased that property quite a while back, and I paid $285,000 for it. I've been paying taxes on it as light industrial. And now, just because you guys think it's a nice, or you don't want that there, you're going to burden me with having to look for another piece of property. The email that I sent you, I would like to get together with you and try to discuss that, and come to a mutual understanding of what we're going to do, or agreement. If that doesn't happen, then my attorney is sending you a letter saying that I'm willing to talk to you and come to some kind of an agreement. If that doesn't happen, then I guess we'll be going to court. But I feel that anybody in the audience out there that feels that you guys are doing the right thing, I would like to ask them to stand up. I mean, you're taking my property that I bought, pay more for it, pay taxes on it, and now you're zoning it down to where it's not going to be worth squat. So, it's by a railroad track, it's on a highway. If anybody out there thinks I'm getting...
Sir, if you address your comments to the board...
Please stand up.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say. So, you did hear from my attorney. Contact me, or I guess we'll be going to court.
Pete, before you sit down, a couple of questions. I want to make sure I'm clear. I was of the impression, late before we had our last hearing, that you would have been satisfied if this parcel, plus the one adjacent to it north, was all rezoned 10-acre minimum. Is that still the case, or am I wrong about my impression?
That was the case. You know what? I think I'm taking a beating doing that. But, you know what? I served in the United States Army in Vietnam, went over there as a mechanic, assisted in my tour, volunteered for the infantry. I came from Italy, and I felt like maybe I needed to do a little bit more than people that were already here to show my allegiance to America. I just don't think that what you guys are doing is right. And from what I heard after the last meeting, after talking to you, you had told me that I was going to get three 10-acre parcels out of that property. I would like to talk to you guys and try to reach an agreement. I fought for this country, and I don't believe that this is what this country stands for. Person working hard, trying to be honest, and then having his property devalued. So, I'd like to talk to you guys.
Thank you. Okay, with the chair, be interested as to where County Council has to say about the general thrust of the legal question in front of us.
Well, first of all, zoning is not a permanent state of property. It's always subject to change, and the property owner will have every opportunity to change the zoning if the board proceeds with this action. There's no vested interest in a particular zoning, so, you know. And in order to be a taking, you have to deny the landowner all, or substantially all of his practical uses of the property. So, before things get to litigation, there's always a process. And, you know, in this case, if the property owner doesn't like the change in the zoning, I think the first thing that he'll do when he's ready to develop that property is to make an application for a rezoning. And then the board will have an opportunity to look at it at that time and make a decision at that time. So, nothing that's done here today is permanent in any sense.
Question of staff, what precipitated what is perceived by the property owner to be the down zone?
It was a general feeling from the subcommittee working group that was working on the community plan, that this property was a spot zoning. It's surrounded by Farm 20s and Farm 80s, that industrial use would be inappropriate, wouldn't be keeping with neighboring properties, a general community consensus that to protect the rural areas. So, they decided that a rezone to Farm was appropriate.
And has the property owner been involved in the process throughout, objecting to that rezoning?
No. When the subcommittee decided on land use changes last fall, we sent letters to all the affected property owners, saying, "Here's what's being proposed. Here's the reasoning. Please contact us or come to the next subcommittee working group to express your feelings." We heard, I personally heard from about half of those owners, maybe a little bit more, phone calls, walked them through it. They were fine. One property owner, that we were proposing highway service zoning on Sheridan Lincoln Boulevard, it was a family-owned house. They objected to it. They showed up at the subcommittee, stated their position. The subcommittee decided to keep them as Farm. We didn't hear from Pete until, I think it was March, when the MAC was actually reviewing the draft plan. And Pete stood up at the meeting and said that he was okay with this rezoning to industrial because...
The farm, you mean?
The farm, industrial farm, because another property in the town site, we were recommending it go to highway service. So, he said, "I was okay with the rezone, because I'm getting highway service in town." We subsequently met with Pete and his brother, staffed it, to talk about development opportunities in Sheridan. And at that time, he told us that he did not support the rezone to Farm.
Okay. And what are the existing site constraints in terms of services to the area that might be impactful on the ability for the site to be used for industrial?
There's no water sewer, so it would be septic and well for this site.
Okay.
Unless he extended salt from the town site, those services.
But we, the county allows for well and septic, so why would that be an issue?
It would, he, something could be done there, but it'd have to be very low intensity, sort of the uses we have industrial on the west side of Sheridan Lincoln Boulevard today, along Windflower Place. They're basically storage facilities or order to employees, so it's very low employees, not a lot of, no need for the water and sewer service.
Okay. So, you had another comment?
Yeah, I do have a comment. You said that I agreed to that. Do they take minutes at these meetings?
I'm sorry?
Do they take minutes at these meetings?
Uh, yeah. The MAC meetings, MACs have...
Was there somebody recording? He agree into it?
Sir, if you, your comments to the board...
I never, never agreed to it. As soon as I found out that, I didn't know prior to that meeting that they were planning on changing my zoning. If they do take minutes at that meeting, you'll see that what he's saying is incorrect. I never agreed to it, never agreed to it, and I'm not agreeing to it now. Also, I do want to make another statement, and that is, I'm 68 years old. I moved here when I was nine. 50 years ago, it was in 1964, I don't know if you, some of you guys look like you're my age, you might have been going down to Sacramento and cruising K&L Street. If you did, and you lived in Lincoln, you drove from Lincoln to Roseville, and it was absolutely, you could not see a light. Okay? Rockland, the population was, I think, 1,200 people. From Roseville to Sacramento, you could not see a light for 20 miles. Is that correct? If anybody can remember that.
Sir, if you can keep your comments...
So, what I'm trying to say now is that you guys have zoned us for 50 years to remain like this. Well, look at what's happened in the past 50 years. Do you think that Lincoln is going to reach Sheridan in 50 years? And is that really a good move?
Okay. Hold one second. Supervisor Holmes, you have a question?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to state that I'm not comfortable moving forward with this until this man's issues are addressed.
Okay.
I'm not going to support this plan until...
Until the what, Jim?
I say, "I'm not moving, I'm not comfortable moving forward with this item until this man's issues are addressed." He's served the country well. He's an honest businessman, and...
Supervisor Montgomery, you have some thoughts?
Yeah. I have a question for staff. Would the change to a farm zone allow the sort of proposed use Mr. DiGiordano is proposing?
No, that would be a use that would be inconsistent with the farm zone.
Okay. So, light manufacturing of the sort that he's describing, granite manufacturing, fabricating, but not...
I have my zoning ordinance. I'll double check, but I believe it's inconsistent with the farm zone.
Okay. And then, just kind of keying off Supervisor Holmes' comments, one thing I would be interested in knowing if we don't take action on this today, and this does come back to us, is if the zoning were to remain the same, staff has expressed some concerns about utilities, water specifically. I'd be interested in understanding the intensity of water use and how that would be disposed of if the zoning were to remain the same, and that use would be allowed if that would actually be appropriate with a well and septic system, just for future. I know you probably don't have that information today. Thank you.
I do not have the... I do not have the information. I think that's an environmental health question. How many employees can you support on septic and well?
Thank you.
And that's the reason that Takings doesn't look at an abstract principle like zoning because as Mr., as the property owner said, it was purchased as light industrial originally and the property owner couldn't proceed because it didn't have the services that it needed. And that's what
For 300 people.
That's what Takings law would need. He'd have a, bring forward an application that actually sought to develop the property rather than right now we're dealing with an abstract hope that sometime in the future he's gonna develop the property. And as I said, this is not, zoning is not a permanent state of the property. It's been there for 50 years. It could change at any time and it could change after this, too.
When, when properties have changed in zoning, there's been compensation if need be. I purchased that piece of property as light industrial. To zone it down, if it were your property, you'd be standing right here saying what I'm saying. I don't, I don't care if Placer County wants to take that piece of property and do whatever they want with it. It's okay with me. Purchase it from me, give me enough money to buy another piece of property that's consistent with what I wanna do, and you can have it. But just to take something from me, all of my hard work and planning and the sweat that I put into it to try to provide for my family and say, hey, here it is, thank you very much. I agree with this gentleman here. I think that it's not right, and I don't think there's anybody in here that's willing to stand up and say that it is. You guys as politicians are supposed to be representing us and protecting us. I feel that I've gotten, I'm a little nervous up here. I'm not very good at this, okay? I barely graduated from high school, got a 40-hour-a-week job when I was 13 years old. Before that, I delivered papers at 12. That's how old I had to be to do that. Before that, I pulled weeds and did whatever I could to put shoes on my feet because my parents couldn't afford to buy them. So I just don't think you're representing me. I really don't think that I'm being represented. And I feel that, I can't even understand, I can't begin to understand how somebody can vote to do that. I could never do that to anybody else. And I can't understand how the people that we've elected to protect us are sitting up there. And he told me, well, you're, you know, Robert Weigant called me up and said, you're not being hurt by this. I don't think that you are. Well, Mr. Robert Weigant, I am being hurt by this. And you should be ashamed of yourself for even saying that. I bought that property for what it is. I paid more taxes on it. Why should I be happy with what you guys, with what you guys are gonna do to me and my family?
Okay. But zoning is a, this is a community plan process, so it involves a lot of the
That's okay. Have the community purchase the property. Do what you want with it.
Sir, if you hold, hold for just one second Supervisor Weigant, before I get to you. And looking at the first board meeting in January, if it were the interest of the board to continue this item, looking at the first board meeting in January on the 6th, what do we currently have by way of timed items on the 6th?
It's gonna be a killer.
I have nothing at this time.
What's that?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. We have
We may not have identified timed items at this point, but we know being the last meeting of the calendar year currently scheduled, but
No, no, I'm talking January.
January.
Yeah, the first meeting in January. No, not December. I know the December one's gonna be a mess.
I'm wondering if council might have some advice in terms of the culling out of the potential rezone here, adopting the Sheridan plan, and then bringing back the additional information sought on the rezone specifically.
Okay.
No, we would have to continue the item because the environmental document is based on, it's like I was saying, it was, it's a community plan. It's not a zoning decision on a particular piece of property, so it would have to be integrated into the entire plan.
Okay. And Supervisor Weigant, you wanna, your comments this time and then?
Yeah, so I'm happy to continue it, but I think, you know, this isn't a place to get into a tit for tat for a couple of old Lincoln people, but frankly, Pete, you ought to be ashamed of yourself for misrepresenting the fact that I called you in the first place as it related to the last comment you made. But let's just set that aside for now. I think the best bet is to continue this, if those of you who want to meet Mr. DiGiordano are willing, I'd recommend you do that. But I wanna frame this issue for you. One is that it's, we've been long at attempting to wrap up the community plan. The community plan is a great effort, and I thank you all, last time we talked about this, for undertaking it. It's been a great thing for the community. We're talking about a piece of property here that was zoned 50 years ago probably to a use that would never occur today. It's a spot zoning, an agricultural area that, in a different era, when you could do industrial types of things on septic and groundwater, but state, federal, and county law would preclude you from doing very much today, so the Takings argument in and of itself is something that we could argue about for another five hours if we so chose. And I don't
You could.
Tolerance for that. But, so what we did try to do was consider some alternatives that would be acceptable to Mr. DiGiordano in terms of other benefits. And frankly, there has not been consistency in terms of attendance at meetings and trying to give us an opportunity to find something that we could get our arms around. So we need to sort of figure out what the parameters of these discussions are and come to conclusion about it and get it wrapped up and finished. And I think so we need a list of different options that can be considered because clearly we have zoning that is incompatible. That's rule one in land use planning, is to try to make sure that we cluster compatible uses and separate those that are incompatible. In terms of value, there has been discussion, Lauren Clark did some great research for me, this property does have great vernal pool restoration value, that's not of interest to Mr. DiGiordano, that's fine, too. I'm willing to consider even buying the property at the county if, of course, my colleagues would entertain all of that because in fact, Kirkwell knows, there may be some great value to us as we kick off the PCCP. But I think the key thing is, I'm good, I'll make a motion that we continue this to January 6th, is it?
Yeah.
I would recommend that Mr. DiGiordano define exactly the framing as to the issues that he wants to discuss. I'll be available, have that meeting if that framing is done. And on January 6th, I would expect that we would wrap up the community plan and get it done one way or the other based on those comments.
Okay, we have a motion to continue this item.
I'm setting time.
I'm sorry? Yeah, we'll go ahead and say, why don't we go with, we started this one at 9:30, I believe? No, this was not a timed item.
Yeah, because it's continued.
Since we closed the public hearing, we don't need to set a time certain, do we? Since this was not a timed item.
Yeah, it would have to be re-noticed if it's gonna, if we're gonna open the public hearing.
No, but we closed the public hearing at the previous meeting. We allow for comments on the changes that the board initiated. We've not reopened, formally reopened the public hearing, so we're simply continuing the item not to a time certain.
Yeah, yes, we can continue it to, not to a time certain, depending on what happens in the interim.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify? So we're closing the public hearing at this point?
Public hearing was closed in the previous meeting. We allowed for comments on the changes that were made since the previous meeting, and so we never reopened the public hearing.
Great, thank you.
So we're simply moving forward with the proposed adoption of the plan. We're continuing that to January 6th. It will be a department head item again on January 6th. In the interim, please reach out to the, to our offices. I know that you contacted mine last week. I'm sorry, we weren't able to schedule a meeting between last week and this hearing today, but I look forward to chatting with you. But to Supervisor Weigant's comments, yes, we are certainly cognizant of the property rights that you have when you purchase a piece of land. We unfortunately are also encumbered by changes in state and federal law that describe suitability of use. And what you might find is that while your perception is that the change from industrial to farm is a down zone in terms of intensity, you might actually discover that you derive more value out of that change. And that's what you need to be prepared to discuss with the board members, particularly since when we meet, I'm going to be looking at it from the standpoint of, based on your current zoning and our current environmental constraints, what would you actually be able to do with your piece? So I'm not asking for your explanation now of what you think you'd be able to do, but when we meet, we'll have that conversation, okay?
So will I be, should I wait for your email to set up this meeting or do you want me?
Linda Brown, my aide, is here. She'll be getting in touch with you, but I suggest you reach out affirmatively to each of the board members in order to schedule a meeting.
I'll resend that email I sent the other day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Any other discussion on the motion to continue the item? Hearing no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, thank you very much. We will jump back in time to our 9:45 item, and this is our annual report on the Williams Schools in Placer County presented by our capable Superintendent of Public Instruction, Gail Garbino Mohica, or Superintendent of Schools, I guess, is your title.
You keep giving me a different title. That's fine. It all works.
The paycheck doesn't come with it, though. Just
No, it does not. That's fine, too. Neither does responsibility and the headaches either. So thank you very much. I am here this morning to present to you findings on our annual Williams Schools inspections. Just to refresh your memory, this is based out of a lawsuit that was settled in the mid-2000s, which found that schools who were scoring in the lowest deciles were subjected to additional county oversight scrutiny. And just to give you a statistics overview here, a decile is when you have 10 equal bands. So if you have 3,000 schools in the state of California, you will have 300 schools that will be in band one, band two, band three, all the way up to band 10. So you will always have, in the state of California, you will always have Williams Schools because it's based on a decile ranking, you will always have schools that score in decile one, two, and three. Every three years, it is rebenched to look at the assessment of these particular schools. And in 2002, they rebenched the assessments of the schools, and they found that we had two schools in Placer County who qualified. One school was Rock Creek Elementary School, which in 2001 was a decile one school, and then the next school was the Woodbridge Fundamental School, which was a decile two school. Since that triggered then additional oversight by the county office, we've, the last three years have been monitoring these schools in four particular areas. Areas, making sure that each student in those schools have standard-based aligned instructional materials, making sure that they have safe and clean facilities, that all information that's reported on their school accountability report card is accurate, and that all teachers who are teaching in that school are appropriately credentialed. And we have to report these findings, not only to you, but to those school districts that serve those schools and to the Placer County Board of Education in November, which is why I am here. So with that, we'll just go through here. We went to Rock Creek Elementary School, and the good news is that they are sufficient in all of their textbooks, they have clean facilities, there's accurate information on their school accountability report card, and they had no teacher miss assignments. And the same was true for the Woodbridge Fundamental School as well. So with that, I can entertain any questions that the board may have. It'll be interesting going forward. We are in the middle of a transition in public education for the last year or two, and we suspended our testing program. Our School Accountability Act has been suspended. So we don't have API scores this year based on testing that was last year, so we don't know what they're gonna use next year because the data needs to be rebenched next year. So it could be possibly that I could be here tomorrow, next year, in front of you with the same schools, looking at, looking at the same criteria. We could, the state of California could suspend this program pending our accountability report, our accountability program, but it's unknown right now. So this may be the last time you see me for a while, or it may not. And I probably won't have accurate information if you see me next year, so it's unfortunate. But I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
Board members have any questions? I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Jump back to Cedar Item 7B, Sunset Industrial Area Plan Update, a request for a consulting services contract.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. Earlier this year, your board directed staff to commence with the update of the Sunset Industrial Area Plan. One of the first steps in that process is the retention of a consultant to assist staff with the preparation of that plan. Sherry Conway, the Planning Services Division, will update you now on the status of that contract.
Good morning. I'm here today to present the plan update, contract, and scope of work for your consideration. As you all are aware, the Sunset area comprises approximately 8,100 acres in the unincorporated area of Western Placer County, sort of sandwiched between the cities of Lincoln, Rockland, and Roseville. The overall objective of the plan update is to re-envision and rebrand to fully implement the potential of this area. Through this new plan, the county will be in a position to attract corporate campuses, institutions, universities, manufacturing, and even entertainment venues, setting the Sunset area up to become the economic engine for Placer County. I'm happy to report to your board that we've already moved into the first phase of the Sunset Area Plan. We've compiled a comprehensive database consisting of several hundred property owners, businesses, developers, and interested parties. We've moved into developing a series of GIS maps that have identified land use, infrastructure, and environmental constraints for that area. We've also initiated a comprehensive stakeholder outreach program that includes dialogue and ongoing meetings with key stakeholders, including the United Auburn Indian Community, PCWA, Western Placer Waste Management Authority, UP Railroad, as some of, as well as some of the other larger property owners in the Sunset area. Also during the month of October, we developed and posted an electronic business survey to the county website. We mailed out several hundred, actually 700, postcards that looked like this, two business owners, property owners in the Sunset area. And I believe for the first time ever, the Planning Services Division did this with the assistance of the QR code technology. It's kind of a nifty code which allows and enables the businesses to access the survey directly from their mobile device. So if you haven't tried this, try it. Super fun. We're looking at the results of that survey right now. Very telling, very telling. And then finally, the reason that we're here today is that during the month of October, using a competitive selection process in conjunction with the Procurement Services Division, the multidisciplinary consulting firm of Mintier Harnish and EPS were identified to assist the county with some of the technical specific aspects of the plan. Consulting team representatives are here today. This team, we're confident, will bring a high level of expertise and experience to this project. During the first phase, the consultants will focus on market trends and conditions, area-wide economics, infrastructure assessment, and they'll be conducting an opportunities and constraints analysis. And based on the data that's gathered, a proposed set of updated land use designations can come forward. And dovetailing with that will be a capital improvement and finance plan that will include a cost-burden analysis and a financing strategy. Once this project is in full swing, I expect to be back here periodically to report to your board the progress of our plan. The action requested today is to authorize the contract in the amount presented in two phases. Phase one essentially will be conducted during this current fiscal year, 2014-15, for a total of $581,000. And phase two, we expect to be fully wrapped up during fiscal year 15-16 in the amount of $417,885. Say that, 417,885. As I said, the principals of the consulting firms are here with you today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Questions for board members. All right, members of the public have any questions in the center? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. We're being asked to authorize for the contract execution and the associated budget revision. Do we have a motion?
Move a purple and make staff, we're back to our position. We're onto some great work ahead of us.
Second.
Okay, motion. Weigant, second. Montgomery, roll call, please. Weigant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to Cedar Item C, Regional University Specific Plan, Backbone Infrastructure and Federal Clean Water Act, Section 404 Permit. Mr. Clark?
Morning, members of the board. Lauren Clark, CDRA, here this morning with three potential action items, depending upon policy direction given, to work with the applicants for the regional university-specific plan project on their backbone infrastructure and in particular, any permit required by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the discharge of fill-in-the-waters of the United States, a 404 permit. As background, the project was approved in December of 2008. It includes a university on 600 acres with potential for approximately 6,000 students. It also has a community of about 560 acres in size that would allow for around 31, 3200 dwelling units. That was approved back in 2008. There was litigation that was subsequently settled. The property was transferred to a nonprofit organization. The county relinquished its sort of contractual rights by virtue of that transfer to a nonprofit. And we are now at a point that there's a pre-development application in today for some modifications some modifications to the land use diagram, including where the dwelling units, the 3,100, 3,200 units, would actually be located. So we'll be moving into a process in terms of changes to the entitlement, but the basic elements of the project are intact today in terms of the size and scale of the university and the total number of dwelling units, thus the applicant's interest in moving forward with the 404 permit. This past summer, we began a discussion with the property owners about the potential for the county's involvement on the backbone itself. And in this particular case, there's some exhibits to your staff report that describe what that backbone is, but examples include the emergency vehicle access, portions of the off-site roadway connection, primarily White Avenue, but other roads as well, sewer pump station, stormwater and conveyance and detention facilities, key off-site utilities, including the sewer connection to the Pleasant Grove wastewater plant, onsite utilities when they are not, when they are an element of the backbone infrastructure. In other words, they're not intract improvements for individual tentative maps. Certain public facilities improvements on a property that would be used by the county of Placer, recycled water, and one of the three major water transmission line alternatives. The reason why we've been approached in terms of benefits to the applicant is the county's role in a public-private partnership has been proven elsewhere, namely UC Merced. I believe it's also occurred in the city of Folsom, where the county's engagement, because of the public policy interest in the facility, allowed the 404 process to go forward more smoothly and more efficiently. We also have a direct role to play in the NEPA document. So we are at the table, and as a public agency, we're able to see administrative draft documents in a way that a private sector developer might not. We also have credibility with the agencies. We have a good working relationship with the Corps of Engineers and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in particular, who would be very involved in this 404 permit. And bringing our reputation and our credibility, we think, can help with the outcome on this particular permit. And then lastly, just overall consistency. We've got the PCCP moving forward. There's a general plan update for the county coming down the road. We have potential changes to this project. The county is involved in all elements of that planning, and for us to be at the table with this applicant on the backbone would ensure overall consistency. In order to move this forward, the staff is recommending that the board consider an agreement. That agreement is not before you today. It is an agreement that we would be bringing to the CEO's office if you provide that authorization. And that agreement would cover a number of things. One is essentially a statement of purpose, which is to facilitate the development of the university site. That's the county's public interest here is primarily on the university site. Two is reimbursement for any county incurred costs, including costs that might be involved with either consultants or even outside councils, such as Resources Law Group. Reimbursement or up for payment of all the permit-related expenses, the filing of the application and related costs there. Hold harmless provisions. Also, the provisions for the transfer of a permit. This is not a permit we necessarily want to hold and implement. This is a permit that we want to transfer to the entity that's actually going to move forward with the construction. Also termination provisions, including a termination provision that provides the right for the county to terminate and withdraw at no cost reliability should Warwick University in particular not move forward, and that's a decision that may happen early next year. If that were to occur, we would come back to the board and simply seek additional direction. And then also indemnification of any costs related to litigation or specific claims. And then lastly, that we are limiting our scope of this initiative to the backbone infrastructure. There are two other 404 permits that would be processed at the same time, one for the university, one for the community. Our engagement would be on the backbone infrastructure only. In terms of the recommendations, there are three. One is to authorize staff to begin to work with the applicant on the preparation of application materials. That could occur as soon as this Thursday, where we have a meeting with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to begin coordination on this project with the project proponents. The second action is to authorize the CEO to execute the agreement with the University Development Trust for all activities associated with the filing, processing, and subsequent implementation of a wetland discharge permit, including indemnification and reimbursement provisions subject to the approval of County Council and Risk Management. And then lastly is to authorize the CDRA Director to file the actual application on behalf of the county and to begin the process of pursuing this 404 permit. I know the applicant is here this morning. They do have some comments that they wanted to provide to give additional context, but with that, I'll close and answer any questions the board might have.
Supervisor Wiegand.
One question, Lauren. Excuse me. Just struck me. The, talked about us working in partnership with regards to just the 404 required for the backbone infrastructure, and I get that now that I think about it. But is there any potential synergism to be had in kind of collaborating on the university versus the other part of the project to streamline that part of it as well? I'm thinking in terms of, you know, exhaustive environmental review and the documents that are required to go into that. And so it might be a bad idea with some downsides, and I'd like you to advise me on that as well.
All three permits will be filed at the same time and processed at the same time. So inevitably, our participation in the 404 permit for the backbone is going to create some of that synergy, I think, for those other permits, even though we may not be actively involved or our name may not be on the actual application. I'd have to talk to the proponents as to whether or not there's one environmental document here and whether or not that's possible. I believe that's probably a benefit to everybody to have a single environmental document for all three elements of these permits, if we can combine them in such a way. But whether or not our name is actually on the permit for regional university, I don't know that that's necessary.
Well, then, rather than speculating what the project applicants might say, why don't we invite the project applicants forward, and they can tell us what they do say.
Vice Chairman Euler, members of the board, Tim Tarrant. I'm here on behalf of University Development Trust LLC 1 &amp; 2. It's a mouthful. But what it really means usually for you and for your staff is it's Julie Hansen and Mike Faust, who are both here, project managers. Yours truly, who's doing the land use counseling. Clark Morrison is here, who's our Wetlands NEPA Council expert, Cox, Castle, and Nicholson from San Francisco, ex-Bay Area, et cetera. And also Mark Calvin, who's our wetland biologist. And we're all here to answer questions if I can. So first of all, I want to thank Lauren in particular for the great work that he's done in getting this to this point and all your staff. We view this as a collaborative effort on a piece, a major piece of property that's actually owned now by, and has been owned for some time, by a nonprofit company, as you all know. One of the things that we've discovered in our very intense discussions with the educational institution that we're talking to is they keep pressing us for when can we actually deliver the site to them. And in order to do that, the last step, other than these land use modifications, which we're processing right now, is this wetlands permit. And that's actually become the longest lead time item. It really is, by far and away, the longest lead time item. So we really need to get going on. We've been spending a lot of time and resources getting wetlands delineations done, getting our legal house in order, getting ready to file this permit. In fact, we think we're going to have the draft application, your staff, next week. So we really hope that you will find a way to support the staff recommendation here today, be the applicant on the backbone permit. I found, Clark did UC Merced, I did Folsom, and then we've all done projects where that wasn't the case, and we've seen the tangible benefit that comes with having this public-private collaboration on the permitting process. And it actually makes a lot of sense, because this is all for the infrastructure you're going to own and operate someday anyway. So it does make a lot of sense. So now, having said that, and not getting too far ahead of myself, hoping and requesting that you'll approve this request today. Our hope also is that we file this application by mid-December. And the reason we need to do that is we know by experience that if you don't get it in by Christmas, or actually mid-December, you'll lose about a month and a half to two months for the agencies. It's just inertia. It's just the way it is. And those two months actually are pretty important right now in the scope of things. So anything that you or your staff can do to help us get this done by mid-December would be greatly appreciated, basically kind of by your next meeting, I think, which is mid-December. And in particular, the one thing that needs to be done is the reimbursement indemnification agreement. We have kind of a draft out there already, but that's the thing we need to get done by mid-December, so this application can get filed. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Just for clarification, real quickly, there's nothing in terms of the execution of these agreements or any additional action required by this board.
That's correct. We set it up so the CEO, whether the CEDRA Director has the authority.
To the point that David was trying to make earlier, when that is the December 9th meeting is really crowded. We're not asking to come back for the December 9th meeting. The applicant's simply asking if administratively we might be able to get our ducks in a row in order to get the permit in the middle of December, and since the board won't be getting in the way of that, is there a sense that we might be able to get that done?
Absolutely.
Good.
Wonderful.
Okay. And then Supervisor Montgomery had a question?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Tarrant. Did you have any comments or any insight into Supervisor Wiegand's suggestion that there might be some potential benefits to piggybacking?
Yes.
Clark.
You don't want to answer that one. That's excellent.
Hunt.
Let's get the specialist in this area.
If Tim answers and I do, we may come up with two different answers. Good result.
And I guess my second piece of that question is, would there be any implications in terms of timing if that were the direction that this board wanted to go, that would have negative implications on your mid-December timeframe?
And the question, Supervisor Wiegand, is whether the county would want to be on the university application as well? I understand the question.
No, you know, I'll leave the technical issues up to you guys and how that's resolved, but I was just thinking that, you know, I'm thinking a broad-based environmental review for the whole project site, if you will, and separating out infrastructure versus residential versus university. You know, I could see doing that, but it seems like there might be opportunity to actually combine that focus, particularly if it's helpful to have the county's name on part of it, a third of it, I guess you could say. And I just, how you resolve that, cross those Ts, dot those Is legally and conceptually, I don't know. I just, I was, question as to whether or not there was an opportunity there that, rather than just separate our questions to the backbone infrastructure part.
Right. The process we see actually will result in the efficiencies that I think you're asking about. You know, each party will have its name on its own application, will get its own permit, but we fully expect the three permits will be processed together. They'll be done under common environmental impact statement, common alternatives analysis, and so on. So the idea is that they'll be jointly processed, so we'll get efficiencies on all three of them primarily because of the county's involvement, and that's why we're doing it that way. And then in the end, by having separate permits, there's just no confusion about who the perm is and who's liable, et cetera, et cetera. So.
That, by the way, was the perfect answer.
Thank you. It doesn't happen often.
Yeah, and it answered my question, too, because that really was the perfect answer. Thank you.
Any answer that obviates another question is a good answer.
That's what I try to do.
Other questions? Other questions by board members? Seeing none, any member of the public wish to address the board on this item prior to us taking action? All right. We'll bring it back to the board. We're being asked to authorize staff to continue their work on the university-specific plan and preparation of materials in order for us to apply for the 404 and authorizing the county executive officer to execute all subsequent agreements, as well as authorizing the CEDRA Director to sign the application for the county to be the project applicant.
Just one quick editorial. It sounds like everything's in great shape to accommodate the timeframes that are necessary, but like with the prior question, I'm not one to second-guess how legally we ought to resolve or write.
Issues regarding indemnification, but if there's a problem, something surfaces, I'd be very interested in someone letting me know and seeing if there's a way that we could resolve that and work that out.
Second, without all the extraneous comments.
And then just under discussion, because I haven't editorialized yet, we collectively, our board, our staff, folks in this county, we talk about the county participating in economic development. But truly, short of us actually spending public dollars to go and do things, there are very few tools we have, and this is one of them. This is a neat tool where, with essentially de minimis risk liability, we can put ourselves forward as an applicant in working with the agencies and help to generate a little bit more cooperation in that way, and maybe move things a little bit more smoothly through the permitting process, because they know that this isn't just another project. This is a priority to us as a county, us as a region, and we want their cooperation in getting it done. So I just want to thank staff that has worked on it to get it to this point, and the staff that will be working on it to get it done by the middle of December so we can get it filed. I want to thank you for recognizing that we do have this tool and for bringing it to us for use. With that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The final CEDRA item is Item 7D. This is in regard to the Community Development Block Grant Program, Program Income Supplemental Activities.
Good morning, and that Donovan, Chief Inspector, Division.
This item is a request to add supplemental activities to the county's CDBG contract. The county has an open community development block grant for sidewalk improvements as part of the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. Due to a CDBG rule change, program income funds must be spent before grant funds can be requested. In the county, CDBG program income funds that are spent will be available in the equal amount in the grant. To utilize the balance of the grant funds, excuse me, the county solicited nonprofit organizations to submit CDBG funding requests. Sixteen requests were received, and staff is recommending funding five of those requests. The requested funds are for Advocates for mentally ill housing, Auburn Interfaith Food Closet, Child Advocates of Placer County, Stand Up Placer, and Lighthouse Counseling and Family Resource Center. Staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the DPW Director to execute a revised standard agreement, and authorizing the CEDRA Director to enter into subrecipient agreements and loan agreements for CDBG funds.
Fantastic. Any questions by board members? All right. This is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing in order to consider the adoption of the resolution approving the dismissal of the supplemental activity request to be added to the Community Development Block Grant 13-CBDG, or CDBG, 8938. Public hearing's now open. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for the authorizations that are being requested.
Second.
Motion, Holmes, Second Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Health and Human Services. This is an update from our Public Health Officer. This is Placer County Health Update. Fairly generic, catch-all title.
Yeah, there you go.
Appreciate that. Provides you a little bit of latitude to move.
That's right.
Economic health update.
Apparently, we have a normal sinus rhythm. So that's really...
That's right. Thank you. Yeah, so thank you.
Parts are really shaped like that? Cool.
Yeah.
See? Learned something. Glad I showed up today.
Learned something new. So thank you, Vice Chairman Euler and members of the board. Rob Oldham, your Public Health Officer, and I really appreciate the opportunity to address you, just to give you an update on the health of Placer County. This will be kind of a very high-level overview. My understanding is we have maybe about 20 minutes. I can abbreviate that some if you so choose.
Just go ahead and launch.
All right.
Supervisor Holmes, nod off. You'll know.
We'll do. All right. So this will only hurt a little, I promise. This is going to be your annual physical for...
As long as I don't see you pulling on a latex glove, we're good to go. That strike a nerve, Robert? So, plus, home for you?
This is not that type of exam, I promise. However, it is, it's my hope that this will be something that we can do kind of on an annual basis, kind of like an annual physical, just to give a quick update on the health and to get your feedback. You know, so really, people ask me, you know, what is, including my own, you know, children, you know, what does public health doctor do? And so that's a little bit of what I wanted to present here, is sort of how do we assess the health of, you know, the whole community and kind of why it's important? So I will dive in.
Try explaining to your kids what a kind of supervisor does.
Yeah.
Think you got it tough.
So the first slide, I just wanted to talk a little bit about what, you know, why does public health matter? And sometimes people don't understand exactly what we do, but I think actually we can bring a lot of value, and sometimes to constituencies that might not normally think of having a relationship with public health. So for one, the quality of life. There's this bidirectional relationship between quality of life and health. So places with higher quality of life have better health, and vice versa. A better health is one of the... A better health is, is one of the, the major factors, the research shows, in elevated quality of life. I know it's, it's kind of the, one of the, the mission for the government of Placer County and just overall to improve the quality of life here, and so I think if we can improve, especially population health, public health, can do, you know, great things to improve, further improve the quality of life here in the, in the region. Human development, so I, I know we had our superintendent here earlier and a meeting with the, the school nurses later on today, so there's a lot of research about, in the education system, so the healthier students learn more, but also, you know, in the work environment or other things, you know, artists, um, other people, to, to meet their, their full potential, being healthy can cause us all to, you know, it really enhances our development, professional and development, on development as parents, et cetera. Uh, and then finally, there's a lot of research now coming out about the, the relationship between health and economic development. So we've known for a long time that healthier employees are more engaged and more productive. However, now there's really a, a push to decrease health costs and, in fact, I talked with the chief medical officer for IBM who was saying that they were locating a lot of their new jobs in areas based off where is the lowest health cost and where do they have, um, you know, the best health outcomes. So just a, a quick overview of sort of the public health responsibilities, what, what we do, it's kind of answering the question when the kids ask, what do you do as a public health doctor? There's actually ten, um, kind of essential functions, and I have the bullets here. I won't go through and read through all of them, but the, the first bullet, think of like a detective or a sleuth, kind of, we search, try to figure out, just as your doctor, you know, on an individual basis tries to identify your, uh, your, you know, what, what your problem is and come up with a diagnosis, we try to do the same thing, whether it's communicable diseases or chronic diseases or what have you. The second bullet, think of a teacher. So we, um, inform and educate the public, so get some of that, some of our diagnoses and try to, uh, talk to, uh, community groups and empower people about things that they can do to improve their health status. The third bullet, think about maybe like a broker or a convener. So we don't have to do all the work ourselves, but it's kind of getting the right people together, whether it's, um, other health providers, uh, but people, you know, like the education community, other, you know, seniors groups, other, um, groups that we can get together and create synergies whenever possible. And finally, kind of the, the last bullet on this slide, um, maybe like think of a policy wonk. So we do get into, um, creating policies but also helping other groups. So for instance, uh, we're, uh, working with, uh, Placer County Office of Education to change some of their policies around, um, you know, how do, how do we deal with allergies? How do we deal with, you know, um, you know, the needs for kids with epinephrine pins and those types of things? The second, uh, five, uh, key responsibilities, enforcing the laws. So think of, you know, kind of like the public health cop, making sure that, you know, doing restaurant inspections, doing, uh, making sure that the laws that protect public health are obeyed, but also that we reach out to, uh, businesses and other groups to, you know, help them. We want them to, you know, make it easy for them to comply with these laws. Assuring access to healthcare. This is, um, important for, uh, right now, it's a very important topic with health reform. Uh, there's a lot of changes going on in the health environment, so, um, although we only provide a small number of the services, the healthcare services in Placer County ourselves, I think we have a role in coordinating and making sure especially that, um, certain groups, um, who are most disadvantaged have access to appropriate public health services and just general physical health services. This is, uh, the third bullet here, a really important, uh, challenge that we face here in Placer County is assuring a competent health workforce. So, uh, we have, uh, a number of shortages of health providers in our communities, and so kind of think of, uh, us as, as recruiters, of, you know, for instance, for psychiatrists, I sit down in interviews and try to get, uh, people to come to Placer County to relocate, relocate here. The fourth bullet, evaluating quality of health services, uh, both the services that we provide, the public health services, our medical clinics, but also, um, working with hospitals and other systems to make sure that they're meshing together and providing the best, uh, benefits and, and quality for the, the residents of Placer County. And finally, kind of this, um, being the innovator, so trying to see what's going on, what's on the cutting edge, um, for, for public health. So with that preamble, just kind of launch into it, um, that, you know, as I mentioned before, the, doing a, a community health assessment is in some ways quite different from kind of an individual health, like what we do in, in your usual doctor's visits, but in some ways, I think there, um, are a lot of similarities. So, uh, we, just as when your, um, doctor examines you, maybe, you know, takes some labs, does some other things, uh, we, we start to, um, look at, you know, first we have the patient in front of us, and there are certain things that are easily accessible, so they might check some vials on, check your blood pressure, your weight, that sort of thing. And then they, um, want to look and, and actually talk with you and go kind of, uh, more in depth and understand how, uh, some of these numbers actually affect your life. It's actually very similar in, uh, doing a community health assessment, that, uh, there are some broad numbers that we can get, and here, you know, you can see, um, on, on, under the bullet, so we have, um, things like health outcomes, so how long are people living? How, uh, productive are they? How healthy are they? How, how much or little disability do they have? These are really hard numbers to get to as far as the health outcomes. These are kind of the holy grail of, uh, health assessment, and I think in the future, um, we will endeavor to get better numbers about health outcomes, just as, you know, hospitals are really, um, their reimbursement is moving towards outcomes. So I think that's, that's the future of, um, looking at systems is looking at actually, do they produce the outcome? But traditionally, both, you know, we've looked more at health output, so how many services were provided, because quite frankly, that's where the financing was, that we paid for, uh, a service-based, um, you know, health system, and the future we'll be paying much more for, you know, um, paying for performance on those outcomes. The other thing that we look at, historically have looked at a lot of these numbers when we evaluate community health, it's just the health infrastructure. Do you have enough hospitals? Do you have enough doctors? Do you have enough, you know, public health nurses? Those types of things. Uh, and then some of these other things, the health indicators and determinants, which can be very useful at times. So an example of a, of health indicator might be, you know, do you, how many people have sufficient housing or how many people have a safe place to, to exercise? But sometimes these, these numbers can skew, especially, and we'll get to this, kind of comparing county by county, sometimes the, the determinants are meaningful to the community and sometimes they're not, and so that's why it's so important that we get community input to see, just as, um, you, you know, your doctor might weigh, you know, I remember when I was a, you know, football player, I, I weighed over two hundred pounds, and you might think, well, that person is overweight or obese. I was actually much more fit at that point, so you would have to actually talk to your patient and say, oh, well, this person is working out every day and they're muscular. And so it's very similar when we get to community health assessment, that you might, looking at the numbers, think that you know what's going on, but then you have to actually get to know the community. So that said, um, I, I did want to celebrate here the fact, um, the University of Wisconsin every year publishes the, you know, uh, they rank, use, um, some common metrics to rank all the different counties around the United States, and Placer County in California was ranked the second healthiest county in California. So, um, it's definitely something that we should celebrate, and here at Thanksgiving, I think I'm, I'm thankful, uh, to live in such a healthy, uh, county, and it makes our job, and it wasn't anything, uh, certainly nothing that I've done, but even nothing that public health in particular has done. It's kind of the whole community and some of the decisions that we've made over the years. These are based on nationwide metrics that, um, so these rankings, they're not perfect, again, as I mentioned, there's, um, they don't have the community input, but as, I'll go through a couple of these metrics with you. I think that there, there is something that we can learn from them. Yes, Supervisor Holmes?
I'm going to be in a forum for Sierra Health Foundation. Can you tell me who's number one, just so I?
Marin County. So that's who we're gunning for, yeah.
Go on, for Marin County will be, I just wanted to.
So just, and, and actually the way, the kind of methodology of how they do these county health rankings, they have six different domains, and you'll see here, so the domains are quality of life, health behaviors, clinical care, social and economic factors, length of life and physical environment, and Placer County was either one or two in four of the six domains, so actually quite impressive to see. Um, and the, on some of the other domains, we'll go through some of our opportunities to even get better. So we're number two, and this is worth celebrating, but as David, you know, likes to say, you know, you don't have to be sick to get better, and I think, uh, we have some potentially low, you know, low-hanging fruit here and things that we might, um, use to set some goals, again, with the community process.
We'll point out that Robert is dragging us down here today because he's got a heart.
Appreciate any help you can get.
Not too late, you know, it's a great, great time to get your flu shot, too. So, um, one of the areas I mentioned, in clinical care, we were actually, you know, um, number two, uh, in, in clinical care, um, so there was a whole bunch of different metrics that they used. So I've actually just picked out the ones where we weren't the, you know, towards the upper echelon, um, and, and actually these are, this is hopeful. I, I don't, I don't bring this up to, to point out our, our weaknesses, but to say, these are actually things that we can do something about. So the diabetic screening, there are evidence-based practices, actually from a public health perspective, of how do we, uh, do a better job of getting providers to be screening for diabetes. Mental health providers, this is something that I, we're already actively engaged in and seeing if we can recruit more mental health providers, doing things like, uh, loan repayment and other options to, uh, attract more mental health providers to our area. And then these other primary care providers. In general, we have a little bit of a shortage of primary care, uh, doctors, but in particular, compared to other communities, we don't utilize the nurse practitioners and physician's assistants as much as perhaps we could, and there are opportunities. I know there's, we're already at work in trying to have, you know, we have some partnerships with nursing schools to, uh, bring more, sometimes called mid-level, uh, providers, uh, so nurse practitioners, physician's assistants, who are critical, uh, partners in the healthcare team of the future. So moving on, I, I mentioned the physical environment was something that in the county health rankings was a little bit lower, which in some ways didn't make sense to me, as I, I came here from Fresno, and, and so I think of, you know, some of these things, the drinking water, the, uh, air quality here seems so wonderful. Um, I think, so, some of these, actually, I dug a little bit more into the rankings, like for instance, the drinking water, uh, we had, um, a little bit higher than usual on some of the other counties on, um, well, you know, water violations, because so many of our residents, uh, utilize wells, whereas in an urban area, they don't have that many residents utilizing well water. Uh, particular, same with particulate matter, actually, we have, you know, we just had the wildfire events, we were all very cognizant of the particulate matter, but also that a lot of our residents use, you know, rely upon with burning stoves and that sort of thing, that can, and just the geography of the area. So some of these may not be things that we could change as much when we get to the physical environment. Driving alone to work, I'm, you know, I think many, if not most of us, uh, drive alone and, uh, into work, uh, and so this is something that, in the urban areas, seems to be a correlate with health. You know, people who utilize active, you know, transportation, who maybe ride their bike, uh, or use public transportation may be more healthy. I'm not sure whether this is something that makes sense for Placer County or not to look at, but certainly on the margins, we might be able to influence some of these things. And getting to, this is really where the money is, um, so again, in health behaviors, we were number two, but this is really, when you look at how do we improve the health of the community in particular, I'll get to a slide about, uh, what's killing us, so what do, you know, what are the major causes of death? Now they're related to health behaviors, which I see, again, as a very hopeful thing, because those are, we have evidence-based practices, how do we, uh, change health behaviors? So here are a few of things where we, again, uh, number twenty-six, we're kind of mid-packed on, on this drug poisoning deaths, but it's something that, uh, I'm very passionate about. I think that we can do a better job. I work with the, um, doctors, the medical society, it's something that the doctors in this community are very passionate about, how do we, um, address the prescription opioid epidemic in this community? And how do we educate, uh, you know, youth and, and families about this as well? So a lot of prevention, I think that we, that's being done in this area and, and probably more that we can do. Exercise opportunities, again, this is something that struck, it was, I, I wasn't sure, because I, I see all the, um, great, uh, opportunities for exercise, but I suppose there are some neighborhoods in, in Placer County where we could do a better job of making sure that they have access to safe places to walk and exercise. Alcohol, auto, auto deaths, we're, um, you know, towards, towards the bottom on, and we do have some areas of Placer County where we have, uh, higher than, you know, California rates of binge drinking. Uh, and then this is the big one, the last one, smoking prevalence is something where we were near the bottom of, and so, uh, we have, uh, room to go on decreasing, uh, smoking in our community. So I mentioned that the, you know, kind of the, uh, health behaviors is where the money is, um, on, uh, improving the health of the community. This slide is, uh, you know, a, a pie chart showing, uh, you know, the different, the, really the root causes of what kills, what kills us. The next, uh, slide, I'll show you actually the, the causes of death, but when you, uh, this was a study done, uh, about a decade ago, published in Health Affairs, describing kind of the root cause of why, uh, people get sick and, um, what was the cause of death. And, and as you'll see here, so the healthcare, you know, the deficiencies in the healthcare they receive only accounted for about ten percent. And, um, so genetic predisposition, which we don't, at this point, the science, we don't have a lot of control over, in the future we may have some more, um, gene therapies and those types of things, but right now, um, we don't have a lot of control over this. We have some control over the healthcare, but that's only a small portion, but you'll see that behavioral patterns account for forty percent of, um, really what's, uh, driving premature death, uh, as do, you know, social circumstances, environmental, uh, exposure also have a significant, uh, role. And then, again, this is, uh, some people told me, don't put this slide in because it's, uh, we don't, no one wants to see all these different diseases and what people die of, but to me, this is one of the most hopeful slides, especially when we talk about, um, the opportunities for lengthened lifespan and, uh, for us, you know, having, um, not just longer lives, but lives with less disability, where we can be, you know, productive and vibrant, um, well into our, you know, eighties and nineties, uh, with, maybe the exception of Alzheimer's disease, although there is some research now about, um, things that we can do to at least, uh, delay, if not prevent, Alzheimer's disease, uh, with an active lifestyle. All these other illnesses are potentially preventable, and many of them are, almost all of them are preventable with just three kind of simple things. Say, one doctor likes to call them the three Fs, so, uh, feet, so what you do with your feet, so walking or exercise, uh, what you do with your fork, so kind of diet, and what you do with your fingers, meaning smoking. Uh, so if we can address those three health behaviors, uh, almost, you know, the, the vast majority of these illnesses could be drastically reduced in their prevalence and their, their burden. And so just, um, the paradigm shift in health improvement, really, we still, we still need a very strong healthcare system, and we partner with our, um, the people who are actually providing the healthcare services, uh, but good healthcare alone is not enough. So we need to address what's really driving, the underlying drivers of these illnesses, health behaviors, social determinants of health and environmental exposures. Uh, I just wanted to take one particular, um, area that, the area of, of smoking prevalence, where we were, uh, we had some, some room to improve and to give you a little bit more detail. So, again, we're number forty-two in the county health rankings. Uh, adult smoking prevalence in Placer County is about nineteen percent versus about thirteen percent in California, and you can see the map here, and you see, uh, Placer County highlighted, so the dark red is, is not good, and actually the lighter, uh, the white is really good. And so you can see, we're not alone, most of our neighbors also have, um, high, uh, smoking prevalence rates. But what's most concerning to me is that we have, um, a lot of youth who are smoking, and this is a real opportunity for us, I think, to do, uh, some intervention to keep, you know, it's, it's so much easier to, uh, prevent someone from starting smoking. If anyone's ever been a smoker, you know how difficult it is to stop. So what can we do? For sure, you know, we can do more with smoking cessation programs. Most healthcare providers now are, um, you know, counseling people about smoking and even providing some interventions to help them to stop smoking, uh, but, as I said, there's a lot, um, of bang for our buck in actually preventing, especially youth, from ever starting smoking, and providing more community outreach and education, uh, working with retailers, um, like CVS, uh, is a, the, the pharmacies stopped, uh, selling tobacco in, in their, in their stores. So those types of, um, voluntary, uh, things that retailers do, and actually they, they did that, it was a business move for them because they wanted to position themselves as being pro-health, and so we want to certainly encourage those types of moves from, from our retailers whenever it's feasible. Smoke-free campuses as much as possible, so this is kind of an environmental change thing, so if, if you make it, um, a little bit harder to smoke, sometimes, you know, we just need a little bit more of a push. It, it's similar, and, uh, I think of my own diet, it's, it's always nice when you have some, you know, fresh vegetables around, uh, that you don't go out and get the, the fast food or something. So it's, it's kind of the same, the research in, in smoking shows the same thing, that if we make it, um, where most people, the more people who aren't smoking, it makes it easier to stop smoking, or it makes it, you know, for kids, uh, that they, they see that most people aren't smoking, it makes them easier to say no to start smoking. And then finally, um, the Great American Smokeout, so that's coming up, uh, this week, November the twentieth. Uh, it's a great time, any day is a great day to stop smoking, but this is kind of a national effort where, um, people can all stop smoking on the same day, and then, uh, we are, we're having an e-cigarettes community forum, so if you don't know what e-cigarettes an e-cigarettes community forum, so if you don't know what e-cigarettes are, ask any teenager, they can tell you, so some, they call it vaping, or, and so it's kind of a controversial area, and we're having, let's see, a community forum, so it'll be at the Community Development Resource Center, December 16th, at 9:00, and I'll be there, and if anyone wants to hear more about vaping or e-cigarettes, please plan to attend. So, just wrapping up here, the, so the other public health challenges, I talked a little bit about, you know, obesity, in addition to smoking is something, actually, Placer County, we're pretty good relative to some other counties on obesity, but it's still, there are communities, especially what's most concerning is among children, where we have higher, you know, now, what used to be called adult onset diabetes, that we're seeing in teenagers and even grade school kids developing diabetes as a result of obesity. Emergency preparedness and response, so I think it's critical that we stay prepared, as we saw, you know, with the wildfires, with the recent Ebola scares, that it's, we have to kind of not keep our eye off that ball. Again, access to care with all the changes in, with health reform, also with an aging population and other, you know, changes that are going on, it's important that we make sure that everyone has appropriate access to care. Health information technology, so this is both an opportunity for us to, even to do some of this, the community health assessment, using, we have these great data systems now, where we can collect very meaningful data and make interventions in a targeted way to improve the health of our community. At the same time, the challenge is, how do we be good stewards of that data and make sure that the data stays confidential? Communicating with the public and stakeholders, so as you probably saw in the recent Ebola scare, sometimes, you know, with the CDC, doctors and other, you know, public health people don't necessarily, you know, get the training to talk with the public and public messaging, so that's something we're really working on, trying to beef up our ability to communicate with the public, using things like social media, media to reach out to partners that we haven't reached out to in the past. And then, again, not taking our eye off the ball for communicable diseases as well. So, we have some novel communicable diseases like Ebola, which, you know, we've luckily haven't seen in California yet, but we have to be kind of on, looking out for new things like that. We have some not-so-novel things like West Nile Disease, which came about a decade ago, and now is here to stay, and that's something that we're continuing, you know, we had a death this year from West Nile Disease, and we're making sure that we're prepared for that, and doing everything we can. And then vaccine-preventable diseases, which, again, I think is a challenge, particularly to Placer County, where we do have, especially some areas of Placer County, where we have low rates of vaccination, for some of the childhood vaccinations, like pertussis and measles, and we're seeing a resurgence of some of those diseases, which we thought we had almost eradicated in the past. But also, and I'll go to my next slide, the, probably the most easily preventable disease with vaccines is influenza, or the flu. And so I just want to end on this, to, just to say, you know, about, like, I'm missing a zero here, but it should be 30,000 Americans die of the flu each year, and last year, in the last flu season, we saw more ICU admissions and deaths than usual, largely because of the strain that was circulating, the H1N1, which you might remember was a novel strain in 2009. Now, we get this on a cycle, every few years, we'll have an H1N1 year, and in that, in those years, we actually see that younger people are disproportionately get sick and very sick from the H1N1 virus, so. We don't know yet exactly what the predominant strain will be, it's very early in the flu season. What we do know, so far, knock on wood, there's no shortage of flu vaccine, so just wanted to say, you know, the flu vaccine is safe and effective, you can't get the flu from the flu vaccine, and it should be covered under most health plans, in fact, it's a preventive service, and so it shouldn't even have to require a copay under most health plans, it should be available at pharmacies, doctors' offices, and we'll be involved in some health fairs and other events where they'll be giving out flu, flea, free flu vaccine. And it's really the best way to prevent the flu, along with kind of basic, you know, wash, hand washing and that sort of thing. So, in closing, the goals, really for 2015 and beyond, I think we have to, you know, continue to be prepared for public health emergencies, decreasing smoking and obesity, and improving other health behaviors, really improving our vaccination rates, especially for our kids, making sure that we have good access to healthcare, improving communication with the public and stakeholders, and then expanding our relationships and collaboration with community partners, and just, I'll close in saying, we haven't done a community health assessment since the 1990s, and it's really our goal in 2015 to do our first community health assessment, where we take some of these numbers and actually go out to the community and ask the question, are these indicators meaningful for you? Do you have other things that would be meaningful to really get to what is going to be, ensure that you have the best health for your kind of individual communities? And then with that, we can take that data to actually come up with a community health improvement plan, to have a plan and to have a, really a strategic plan to decide where we want to go to improve public health in Placer County. So, with that, I will take any questions that you have, and I really appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Board members, have any questions? Seeing questions by board members, Supervisor Holmes?
Always, I want to make a comment, yesterday I had the opportunity to tour Chapadae out on Atwood Road, and I was impressed, they're going through an expansion and remodel, there's actually 15 dental chairs in that office, and they're going to have 26 exam rooms, and so it's, with the Affordable Care Act and people that have more access to insurance, that's really a benefit to our community, so I just wanted to point that out, I'm glad that I went out there and actually saw-
Yeah.
-what they're up to, so thank you.
It's a beautiful facility, thank you for pointing that out.
Dr. Oldham, I did have one question, and so when we go forward with your vision for greater community input as to what their health needs are and what they think the metrics should be, are we going to be able to have an ability to sort of differentiate between different communities within the county?
Yes, in fact, so we have, so there's already, in fact, up in Tahoe Truckee, just last week, the Tahoe Forest Hospital did a hospital-based community health and needs assessment, so we're going to take some of the data that the hospitals have already done, and then try to layer onto that in individual communities, yeah, that'll be kind of community by community. We'll do a Placer County-wide community health assessment, but within that, I think it's really important that the different sections and areas of the community are addressed, especially those who are experiencing health disparities, so thinking of areas like Kings Beach, that we know, because we have a clinic there, we know how impacted that area is, and we'll, so we'll kind of, we call it hot spotting, so find the places where we're seeing the most negative health outcomes, and really focus in on those, but getting, I think it's important that every community has, that we give some feedback and design a plan that's unique to them.
Absolutely, and my concern, you mentioned Kings Beach, which is great that that's on your radar, but we do actually have reasonably good access to healthcare in the east, in the far east end of the county. I'm really concerned about communities like Immigrant Gap and Iowa Hill, and places that literally have no access, you know, except maybe a 50, 60-mile drive, and so I'll be very interested to understand how we get better outcomes in those communities.
That sounds great, yeah, that's exactly what the process, because there, the reasons for no access and immigrant, or limited access in immigrant gap are very different from access issues in Kings Beach, so, yeah, that's what the process is about, which you couldn't get to by just looking at the numbers, right?
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions by board members, Dr. Thank you very much for your update, appreciate it. We'll go ahead and move on to Public Works.
Do we have to make a, do we have to accept the class report?
I don't know that we, requires any action that we accepted, I think by dutifully listening, we accepted it. Do we have to, is it, does it require action?
And I just-
Okay, do you want to make a motion that we accept the report? Okay, if it makes you happy, we'll, we'll accept your motion to accept the report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, Supervisor Wiegand, the healthy one. So, we have a motion, Holmes, and a second, Wiegand, to accept the doctor's report, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. With that perfunctory duty performed, we'll go ahead and move on to Public Works, beginning with an always-stop at Wellington Way and Copperwood Drive.
Good morning, members of the board, Richard-
You don't look like Ken.
I look very similar to him, I realize that.
I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying you don't look like Ken.
I'd need stilts, I think, to get anywhere near that level. Again, Richard Moorhead with Public Works, I'm here before you today to request two actions, one is to adopt a resolution to install an always-stop control at the intersection of Copperwood Drive and Wellington Way, and approve the attached intersection design, which is up on the screen there for your viewing. Wellington Way is a county-maintained road, it connects Eureka Road to East Roseville Parkway. On the east side of the roadway is Granite Bay High School, the west side of the road is Silverwood West Subdivision. Recently, a request came forward from residents of the Silverwood Subdivision to install an always-stop at that location, to increase pedestrian safety, and to help slow vehicular traffic in that area. Public Works went to the MAC, the Granite Bay MAC, in April, again in October, and the MAC has recommended approval of this design, or recommended the board approves this design. The local school district is in support of the community's desire for the project. At this intersection, the collision rate is higher than what you would typically see as statewide average for this type of intersection. That being said, it doesn't meet the Caltrans standards for the design or for the installation of an always-stop, based on volumes and collision rates that you see there. The county does have a policy that allows us to take in community consideration in the input, or community input into consideration for the installation of an always-stop. When, with the always-stop at this location, there are certainly pluses and minuses, it will assist traffic leaving the subdivision during peak times, it will increase pedestrian safety at the controlled crossing location there. There's, the downside to this would be that there will be increased congestion, in particular, at the driveway, at the school, it's about 65 feet to the south of this intersection currently, on the east side of the roadway, that's enough room for two vehicles to queue. What we anticipate probably happening is people will start using that southern access, about another 300 feet below this, so we think that that will self-mitigate. There's certainly increase in delay, and increase in some noise, and you increase different types of accident rates when you put in an always-stop, particularly you end up with more rear-end collisions is what you might see in this location. Traffic's moving pretty slow, lots of congestion, don't anticipate much of that happening. And with that, Public Works recommends the installation of the stop sign, based largely on the community input, and the support from the school district, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And just for clarification, carport coming in from the west there, there's a stop sign already existing there.
There is, that is, yes, there's a side street stop, this would make it an always-stop.
Yep. Okay, questions by board members? Seeing none, members of the public, which should address the board on this item? Come on forward.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good morning. My name is Bill Hatch, and I'm a resident of the West Silverwood homeowners community, and have been on the homeowners board there for about 10 years, until very recently. I'd like to just comment that I appreciate very much the efforts of Supervisor Euler and Linda Brown in, in this effort to discuss this thoroughly. This issue started, we had our very first meeting at the supervisor's office two and a half years ago, and we've met on numerous occasions with the school district. We appreciate the time that Ken and his staff have put into this, we appreciate all the hours that the school district and the principal, both the former principal, Mike, and Jennifer now have put into this issue. It's a complex issue, and with the efforts of all the people and the time and two very long meetings with the MAC to discuss the issues, we've come up with a solution that should dramatically improve the safety at this intersection, and we very much appreciate the efforts and the recommendation of Public Works to have this accomplished. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board on this item? Seeing none, bring them back to the board for action. Motion, Holmes, second, Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. Move on to 9B, transfer of residual fixed asset vehicles to the sheriff's office, modifications of county vehicle policy.
Good morning, Bob Costa with the Department of Public Works. Today, we're here to request your board's approval to transfer 61 fixed asset vehicles from Public Works Fleet Services to the sheriff's office fleet. DPW has traditionally been responsible for owning and maintaining the countywide vehicle fleet, including sheriff's office vehicles. Under that management structure, customer departments pay for fleet services, either through direct billings or annually established fleet grades. Several years ago, the sheriff's office began taking steps to establish an independent fleet program with, for their department vehicles and equipment. Initially, this began by directly leasing vehicles to meet specialized needs. In fiscal year 12, 11-12, Public Works transferred 17 fleet-owned vehicles to the sheriff's office ownership, with the understanding that all future patrol vehicle replacements would be purchased and owned by the sheriff's office. Through this replacement strategy, the sheriff's office would eventually own and manage all of their fleet vehicles. There are currently 61 sheriff's office-assigned vehicles remaining in Public Works' managed fleet. Since the sheriff's office is currently prepared to accept and manage these remaining vehicles, an accelerated transition appears beneficial to both departments. While the sheriff's office would assume responsibility for fleet vehicles acquisition, maintenance, fueling, regulatory compliance, and administration, Public Works is prepared to continue providing any desired services and support on a direct billing basis, as is done for other customers. The county vehicle policy approved by your board in 2010 recognizes Department of Public Works as the provider of fleet management services for the county. A second request today is amendment of that policy to distinguish fleet management roles and responsibilities related to this action. There's no net county costs associated with these requests. Our recommendation today is, first, that you authorize the fixed asset transfer of vehicles listed on Attachment 1 in your staff report, and that would be from the Department of Public Works Fleet Services to the sheriff's office, and second, that you adopt the modifications to the county vehicle policy, recognizing the establishment of an additional fleet manager and associated responsibilities. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions by board members? Seeing no questions, any member of the public who should address the item prior to us taking action? And we have a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion, Montgomery, second, Holmes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you. All right, that concludes our agenda, is action items in public, we'll go ahead and have close, County Council take us into closed session, please.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the one item of real property negotiations with its real property negotiators, listed on page 4 of the agenda.
Thank you very much.